Mayor, I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the Elmwood Park Mayor and Council for May 6, 2021, to order at 6:34 PM. On roll call, Council members Ballastreary.
Here.
Fakori.
Yes.
Fasolo.
Here.
Golebeck absent. Pellegrine.
Here.
Council President Wetchler.
Here.
Mayor Colletti.
Here.
We have a call on.
Thank you, Erin. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Can everyone please rise for our prayer and flag salute? Oh God, we ask you bless our meeting, which we entrust your care and protection. Please remove all selfishness and prejudice from our hearts and implant therein a keen sense of justice and a greater love for you and our neighbors. Guide us in our deliberations so that our decisions will always please you and bring you peace and happiness to our community. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Whereas Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of the State of New Jersey require at the commencement of every meeting a statement of compliance be read by the presiding officer. Now therefore be advised that the meeting requirements for this meeting have been met by publishing a special meeting notice in the record in Herald News and by posting such notice in the office of the borough clerk, as well as in a public place within the municipal building, and by notifying interested citizens. Said notice was posted and transmitted on April 29, 2021, and published on May 3, 2021. Erin?
Thank you, Mayor. First on the agenda this evening, we have approval of meeting minutes. From April 15, 2021, we have our special meeting, work session meeting, and executive session meeting minutes. And then from April 22, 2021, we have our regular meeting and executive session meeting minutes.
May I have a motion on the minutes?
Second.
Call or roll, please.
On roll call, Council members Ballastreary.
Yes.
Fakori.
Yes.
Fasolo.
Yes.
Golebeck absent. Pellegrine.
Yes.
Council President Wetchler.
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on to resolutions, Resolution R-185-21, Approval of Additional Funding Borough Special Planner. Whereas the mayor and council of the borough of Elmwood Park found the need to appoint a special projects planner to fulfill outstanding projects within the borough. And whereas via Resolution R-86-21, DMR Architects was selected to provide said services for an amount not to exceed $25,000. And whereas an additional amount of $15,000 has been recommended by the borough administrator, now therefore be resolved by the mayor and council of the borough of Elmwood Park, County Bergen, State of New Jersey, that they do hereby approve an additional amount of $15,000 to DMR Architects of 777 Terrace Avenue, Hasbrook Heights, New Jersey, for a new total amount not to exceed $40,000 for their term ending December 31, 2021.
May I have a motion on the resolution?
Double.
Call or roll, please.
First by Wetchler, second by Fasolo. On roll call, Council members Ballastreary.
Yes.
Fakori.
Yes.
Fasolo. Golebeck absent. Pellegrine.
Yes.
Council President Wetchler.
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution R-186-21, Approved Payment to Intrep Solutions LLC for Server Installation. Whereas a quote has been received by the borough's informational technology consultant, Intrep Solutions LLC, to install a new server within the police department in the amount of $11,605. And whereas the borough administrator/policeman chief has reviewed and approved said quote, now therefore be resolved by the mayor and council of the borough of Elmwood Park, County Bergen, State of New Jersey, that they do hereby approve payment in the amount of $11,605 from Bond Ordinance 20-27(c) to Intrep Solutions LLC.
May I have a motion on the resolution?
Second.
Call or roll, please.
First by Wetchler, second by Ballastreary. On roll call, Council members Ballastreary.
Yes.
Fakori.
Yes.
Fasolo. Golebeck absent. Pellegrine.
Yes.
Council President Wetchler.
Yes.
Motion carries. Now moving on to the budget hearing portion of our meeting. Mayor, at this time, we can entertain a public hearing on our 2021 municipal budget.
Anyone from the public here to speak on what Erin had just said concerning the budget? If not, I will close it. We have a...
This is not ordinance 21-07.
No, this is just a public hearing.
This is just a public hearing?
On the budget.
Okay, then.
Anyone else here to comment? If not, then I'll close the public portion. Erin?
Thank you, Mayor. Moving on to Resolution R-187-21, Introduce Ordinance Number 21-07 on Second Reading. Whereas a public notice has been given by the borough clerk that an ordinance entitled "Calendar Year 2021, Ordinance to Exceed the Municipal Budget Appropriation Limits and to Establish a Cap Bank," NJSA 40A:4-45.14. Whereas said ordinance was introduced and passed at a meeting held on Thursday, April 1, 2021, and that further consideration of this ordinance would be taken up at this meeting. And whereas all persons interested in said ordinance were given an opportunity to be heard concerning the same, now therefore be resolved by the mayor and council of the borough of Elmwood Park that an ordinance entitled "Calendar Year 2021, Ordinance to Exceed the Municipal Budget Appropriation Limits and to Establish a Cap Bank," NJSA 40A:4-45.14, pass on final reading.
May I have a motion to open to the public?
Second.
Call or favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public here to speak on this?
Okay, this is regarding the cap bank, correct? Okay. How exactly does it work? I know there's a 1%, and then you're going to go up to 3.5%. Correct? Am I correctly understanding that?
In the percentages, I'm not quite sure if you are, Jeff.
We have our borough auditor on the line, so I will put my microphone to the speaker so everyone can hear him. Go ahead, Steve.
Thanks, Erin. So every year, the state sets the annual cap rate. For 2021, it is 1%. And in order to go to 3.5%, and more importantly, in order to preserve the bank, this ordinance is introduced and adopted every year, just about by every single local government in the state. What this allows the borough to do is, this budget as introduced is $1.4 million under the spending limit. Without the adoption of this ordinance, that $1.4 million bank going into future years would be lost. And what it does is it provides additional financial flexibility in case something bad happens. And then we had a situation just a couple of years ago with Markell where we had to budget significant additional money for the demolition and other things involved with that site. Now, we ended up getting the money back eventually, but the money had to appear in the budget. And without having sufficient bank, it would have caused a real fiscal problem.
Okay, so this is carried for two years, correct?
Correct.
And it increases as it goes forward? What's the certain...
It's calculated based upon the current year budget, the previous two years of bank that gets you to a net number. This year's net number is $1,421,807. Next year's number will be something different, depending on what the 2022 in-cap appropriations in that budget will be.
What happens to that cap amount of the money that we spend that much? What happens if it's not...
After two years, the oldest year goes away. So right now, we've got cap from 19 and 20. For the 22 budget, the cap for 19 will go away, but there will be a cap bank for 21 that will be added back in. So it rolls every single year.
What is the average, say, from the last couple of years that has been used in the cap this year?
I didn't hear the whole question.
What is the average of the preceding year/years of that particular cap percentage that has been used each year?
This year, it was 1%. In 2020, it was 2.5%. And I don't remember what it was in 2019. Again, the percentage, the annual percentage is set by the state every year.
Every year, every point a year?
Yeah, right. Every, in December, the state sets what the cap is for the following year's budget.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
You're very welcome.
I'm sure somebody's going to use it.
You can leave it in case for our other public...
Yeah, we're good. Thank you, Jeff. Anyone else from the public here to speak? If not, I'll close the public portion. May I have a motion to adopt the ordinance? Any discussion? Call or roll, please.
First by Wetchler, second by Fasolo. On roll call, Council members Ballastreary.
Yes.
Fakori.
Yes.
Fasolo. Golebeck absent. Pellegrine.
Yes.
Council President Wetchler.
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution R-188-21, Amend the 2021 Municipal Budget. Whereas the local municipal budget for the year 2021 was approved on introduction on April 1, 2021. And whereas the public hearing on said budget has been held and advertised, and whereas it is desired to amend said approved introduced budget. Now therefore be resolved by the governing body of the borough of Elmwood Park, Bergen County, that the following amendments attached to the resolution to the approved introduced budget of 2021 be made.
May I have a motion on the resolution?
Second.
Call or roll, please.
First by Wetchler, second by Pellegrine. On roll call, Council members Ballastreary.
Yes.
Fakori.
Yes.
Fasolo. Golebeck absent. Pellegrine.
Yes.
Council President Wetchler.
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution R-189-21, Adoption of the 2021 Municipal Budget. Be resolved that the mayor and council of the borough of Elmwood Park and the county Bergen, State of New Jersey, do hereby adopt the 2021 municipal budget set forth herein and shall constitute an appropriation for the purposes stated of the sums therein set forth as appropriations and authorization in the amount of $19,182,400 for municipal purposes.
May I have a motion on the resolution?
Double.
Any discussion? I have something I'd like to say on the budget. Roy, do we have an exact figure per...
Household.
Yes.
Right. So on the amendment, we, as you said, Mayor and Council, on intro, you weren't satisfied with the tax rate, which would have been $60, $62 a household. So the BA, the RMA, most of you, if not all of you up there, including you, Mayor, we all sat, we went through the budget again, and I think we have a resolvement where we went from $62 to $38 a household. Again, we can talk all evening, but the highlights that the BA brought up last time is during a pandemic, we don't spend money in Elmwood Park. We watch every dollar. This was choked out because of the pandemic and the revenue shortfalls. Our goal was to be lower this year. There's no doubt about it. But we also never expected the devastation that occurred to our fiscal home year in Elmwood Park, as well as the state of New Jersey and the nation. So to do $38 is just an testament of what Mike Filigino, our BA, did to keep the place up and running, whether it be police, fire, ambulance, tax collecting. It's just remarkable what happened here in Elmwood Park. So it's $38, Mayor, predicated on the assessed values of...
335?
332,607. Tax point 208,233.
Thank you, Roy. First, I'd like to commend all from going from 62 to 38. That's a big adjustment. But I got to talk a little about my own philosophy here. It upsets me to increase $1. I know that in today's world, that sounds probably ridiculous, but it's a goal. You have to set a goal. Taxes are the one thing that all approximately 23,000 residents in this town and the mayor and council all have in common, a common thread that nobody can dispute. It hits us all. Our job is to run this town safe and maintain property, and our goal is not to raise taxes. We can do this, or at least limit the raise, if we all work together on it and realize that it is an issue that we all have to remain cognizant of. If we don't believe in what I'm saying, then this makes no sense, because I don't even have a vote up here unless I break a tie. But it's the philosophy of, during the course of the year, setting our goals at a zero, and then what will happen, will happen. Going forward, Roy, I was wondering, can you give us a report, go from department to department, and just see what their budgets are and see if there's anywhere we can save with these individual areas of budgeting?
Yep. So we're doing that now. However, after tonight, when the budget is adopted, you will then get the dollar-for-dollar what's called the percentage report. That will be sent to you every month. And I could tell you right now, we're doing on a monthly basis now, Mike and I, on the revenue side. So on the appropriation side, it's going to be very easy to do. After tonight, you will get it by the 5th, the 6th of every month. If you don't have it, call me, I'll get it to you. We're watching, as I said again, every dollar we're spending, Mayor, we are. In fact, you're here, we do speak about it.
Ms. Keating does provide monthly financial reports, but it only includes the money that's going out. And she does it kind of broad on the department, and then each department head gets a full breakdown. So that will be always on the second work session of each month. It's in the financial report.
What I'm looking for, though, Roy, is I want, you've been here a long time, and you're doing a good job. I'd like that expertise, and I remember years ago, you'd come up to me and say, they're spending too much money in that department. What I need, and what I'm requesting, is for you to go through the departments and see. The thing I don't like is sometimes, and that doesn't mean it's happening here, I'm speaking hypothetical, department heads, they see they got a budget of $100,000. If they don't spend that whole $100,000, the following year, they're not going to get the $100,000. We have to eliminate that fear from our department heads. If they save us money, we'll maintain where their budget was at and pat them on the back. This is what I'm driving for, to see if that we're, everyone's on board with that saving philosophy.
You set that up many years ago, and we do that even today, Mayor. We do. Mike and I, we meet literally with Scott Cars every two weeks. Where are we? What are we doing? What broke? What do you need for the emergency? We're doing this every day. So there be even more, so that everyone on the dais gets it, as Erin said. After tonight, because now it's adopted, you will get dollar-for-dollar what's being spent, what's the percentage left, and we watch it. And you'll see it every month again, beginning tomorrow.
Yeah. And thank you for that. And just if you see something that's going a little abnormal, bring it to our attention. Not that we want to hurt anybody, but we want to save wherever we can. You save a nickel here, a nickel there, a nickel there. At the end of the day, maybe this would have been $32 instead of $38. I know it sounds petty, but that's the philosophy that I live under, and hopefully the council agrees with that type of philosophy, because ultimately, all it does is help each and every one of us here, including ourselves, because we all pay taxes here also.
So I could tell you, the council that's up there, they met, they've been in my office, and they're watching every dollar, especially right over there, Councilwoman Wetchler, who's signing the vouchers. And she asks all the time, hey, this is too high. I said, all right, let me talk. So it's being done. Same with the RAP program. Where's the money going? What revenue came in? Sandy, you gave me a call yesterday on a couple of issues. So it's every day we're doing this, just so you know, Mayor. But you want to see some paper on it.
If I might interject something for a second?
Sure.
Just for a little broad-stroke perspective. The tax levy went up $269,000, as amended. The pension bills from the state are $240,000 more than last year. Our garbage and recycling costs are up $115,000 over last year. That's $355,000. It increases in two places where the mayor and council has absolutely no control. So those two expenses went up more than the increase in the tax levy. When we went through the budget, and you look at all the departments, the clerk, the police, fire, finance, recreation, health, those appropriations are $32,000 less than they were in 2020. And I think that's important for everybody to be on the record, because the borough is controlling what they can control. Unfortunately, in this process, we get bills from the state payable April 1 for a fixed amount of money for both of the state pension plans. And recycling and garbage, you're at the mercy of a public bid, and what it costs to dispose of it. So, you know, in my estimation, that this governing body, this administration, is doing, Mayor, exactly what I think your philosophy is, is that the taxes and the expenses are not going up a dollar more than they have to.
Steve, do we have a projection for next year?
We do. We do. I sent that out when we introduced the budget. Right now, that projection is about $80. Again, but that's just a projection. You know, there's a lot of things that are going to change, especially, I think next week, there's going to be some information released from the state on how, in the federal government, how we're going to be able to use the new federal COVID money. That'll have an impact on some of this year's spending, and it'll certainly have an impact on next year's budget as well. But again, the projections are just those, based on a set of circumstances as we know them the day we do the projection. But in none of the years is there any three-digit projected tax increase over $100. It's more of 80, 50. Again, and those get fine-tuned, just like we fine-tuned the 62 to 38 today.
Yeah. No, I can appreciate that, but to me, staying under $100 is not a big deal. To me, getting to zero is a big deal.
And again, getting to zero is a big deal. And, you know, if the pension bill hadn't gone up $240,000, and if garbage and recycling hadn't gone up $115,000, if those two appropriations were flat in 2021, you would have had no tax increase. You know, it's one of those but-if. And unfortunately, there's just certain appropriations that, no matter how hard you try to be as fiscally conservative and prudent as you possibly can, there's not a thing you can do about it. If the bill says pension goes up 200, 300, 400,000, you have to pay the bill.
Okay. Steve, I appreciate your comments. Roy, you have anything more to say?
No, thank you.
Absolutely. Can we have your microphone, please? We want to hear that lovely voice of yours.
I want to commend Roy, Mike, and our head department heads. I think they work very hard. They do everything. Like Roy says, I'm there all the time, asking this, asking that, you know, how come this and how come that. When there's something that the state says we have to do, we have no control, like Steve just said. But our team, let me tell you, they work hard, and they work very hard for this town to make sure that no taxes go up more than it has to. And what they came down from 62 to 38, let me tell you, our residents are going to be very happy, because, you know, not many towns could do that, and we are. We're all struggling together. We all live here together. We all work together. And like I said, I want to commend all our department heads and the two gentlemen sitting here. They've worked very hard for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we know what the school is doing in terms of their budget? What is it, Roy?
It's a 2% increase. Yeah, and for the record, I'd rather go get the actual document.
Yeah, okay. So, okay. Yeah. While Roy's doing that, do we have any other further comments on the budget?
I also would like to commend Roy, the chief, all the department heads, Steve on the phone here. I think they all do a great job every year to help keep things to the minimum. And I see what you're saying, Mayor, because it was such a tough year for all our residents, we would have loved to seen zero, but there were a couple of factors not, you know, that we couldn't control. So under the circumstances, I think they did an excellent job. And like Dara says, I think their residents will understand that and be, you know, accept the fact that it is 38 and that we worked hard to get it down from 62 to 38. So I'd just like to commend everybody. Hopefully, Mayor, like you're saying, in the future, we can get it, you know, to zero, and we'll work even harder on that. I know they will, because they all, their hearts all go out to our residents that are struggling. So I think we're going to get there.
Hope you're right. Sounds encouraging, Roy, to say the least. Anyone else? Sandy?
Yes, I also, I would like to commend Roy, the chief, department head Steve. They work very hard at this, and we know that. I mean, bringing it from the 62 to 38, they really did try to push to get to where we were hoping to be. And Roy, I mean, Roy has been here for many years, and he's done a stellar job for us. So I'm very confident that where we're at, this is where we had to be this year. And I'm sure that we will, and they will continue to work as hard as they have and try to bring it down a little lower next year, if it's possible.
Thank you. Mr. Fasolo, I see you were moving over there on that chair.
Yeah. I don't know, sometimes you forget me, so I have to move a little bit so you see me. I also want to share the same sentiment as the rest of the council in commending Roy and Steve and all our department heads in, you know, keeping their spending down and keeping us at under $100 at least. I am happy that we're able to deduct that increase by $24, especially in this type of year where everybody's struggling, and even a dollar is a lot to ask our residents. But we're lucky that it did come down $24, and we're also lucky that it didn't go over $100 in this year. So that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Fakori, would you care to speak?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Mike. Just want to commend Roy, Mike, for the good job. I know it's tough. It's not easy keeping the cost down with everything going up. So I have to say, from 62 to 38, it's a hell of a chunk, but great job. Thank you.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Just to echo what Mr. Wilcott said, the things that are beyond our control are going up. The things within our control, Roy and I, all the department heads, Steve's here, so I'll mention him. Everybody is cognizant of the fact that we want to keep spending down. Emergencies come up during the year, especially in the police department and the DPW, which are out of our control as well. We did have revenue shortfalls this year due to the pandemic. The courts were shut down for many, many weeks. The police department was at half-staff for a good amount of time, and the building was closed. So with all that being said, $38, in my estimation, is a very good number, based on all of that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Also, Mayor, for anything I have to take pride in, what the budget aspect is being proposed. Under the circumstances, I'm sure if you were to match it up with many of the other towns, you're going to see a tremendous increase in taxes. And the good thing about to look for is that once the federal government starts giving the money back and repaying some of the expenses that the borough will have to apply for, which will have the right to do so, that shortfall is going to probably could be picked up next year, which is going to help the budget next year. Me, as borough attorney, I have kept my part in not increasing anything, any work or charging any extra money for all the work that I've done, which I'm sure if it was another law firm, you would have been hit. But I've done my best also in the legal department. But I've done my best also in the legal department to keep the costs for this borough down. You have to take into consideration that I live here. I pay taxes here too. So, that is also part of me. So, whatever I've always done, I've done so that would not be an increase in the costs to the borough.
Thank you. Before I move on to motion, Steve, I have a question.
Sure.
Steve?
I'm here.
That $2 million that came from the feds pertaining to the COVID, when did you say you're gonna have knowledge when, where, and when that could be spent?
Well, the, the, the rumor mill says the fed, the federal government's gonna issue some sort of guidelines maybe next week. And then the state has to then take the federal guidelines and decide how they, how they work and how they will fit with the money that everybody's getting on the, on the, on the municipal, on the local level. So, it, it could be, it'll be, it'll probably be a number of weeks before we have any clear indication of, of how that money can be used. I know that the one thing that the state has said from the beginning is that anybody that did the COVID-19 special emergency last year, which was to replace revenues, which used $551,323, that's the first thing that the money gets used for, to pay that off. So, that takes that out of the equation to be raised over five years, starting in 2022. So, if, if you're got, and again, I don't know what your number is, if you're getting, say, a million and a half dollars.
Two million, Steve.
You're gonna get $750, excuse me?
Yeah, it's two.
Two million, okay. So, you're gonna get a million this year and a million next year. Of the million you get this year, the first $551,000 is gonna go towards paying off that special emergency for revenue losses that was passed in late 2020. The balance of the $440,000 will, there'll be, there'll be guidance coming from the state as to how that can be used this year.
Okay, here lies my question. Say a month from now, we find out that we can use that money to lower this increase, can we amend at that point?
No, the budget's, the budget's adopted. Once the budget's adopted, you can't go back and reopen it.
Okay. Okay, thank you for answering that. Sorry, that was the answer, but thank you for answering that.
Well, yeah, I'm sure, I'm, you know, I'm sure some of that money will go towards, towards things that are in the budget, which will then save money and perhaps the ability to cancel some appropriations in, in this year's budget before the end of the year to help regenerate surplus, to just further enhance and help next year's budget.
Thank you, Steve.
Very welcome.
Any other further discussion? If not, may I have a motion on the resolution?
Mayor, we actually already had a motion by Balaschary, which was seconded by Wetchler.
Okay, call the roll then, please.
I almost forgot myself.
That's because of all the talk that we were doing.
On roll call, council members Balaschary?
Yes.
Ficori?
Yes.
Fasolo?
Yes.
Golebeck, absent, Pellegrine?
Yes.
Council President Wetchler?
Definitely, yes.
Motion carries. Mayor, that's all I have for the special agenda.
Okay, public hearing. May I have a motion to open the floor for public comment?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Anyone from the public here to speak, I guess, on everything we went over this evening?
Jeffrey, get in the mic, please, so we can hear you.
We're taking that, taking that down a little bit, Jeff, so it's so you're not rude. You do that.
He said Mr. Rigatano, he went up by himself regarding the school budget.
Oh, we never got the answer. Right, you're right, Jeff. What was?
So, it's, it looks like it's gonna be flat right now.
Flat?
So, it's up a little bit, but it's not the 2%. That's why I went and I got it. Don't forget, their monies are more than what we're gonna get, and they have far more liberties than we do. So, their American Rescue Act will be far greater than what we're gonna get on our side of the budget.
Yeah. It's just the...
Jeffrey, I think 35 women drive Elwood Park. I believe the amount to be raised by taxation is identical to 21, 22 as it was for 2021.
It's not identical. It was 37, oh, 29, 882, and this year, it's the 37, oh, 75, 855. I said it was roughly flat.
I believe that's the way the budget's split, the way payments are made.
Yeah, it's the A4F.
Okay, I'm just saying because of the way it's paid. Now, the school's budget is July 1st, June 30th, whereas yours is June, January 1st through December 31st.
Correct.
Okay. Because I, I went to the meeting, it is effectively, and I asked the VA, and he said it was identical as far as the amount to be raised on taxation.
When you're dealing with 37 million and there's roughly a $50,000 delta, I said to everyone, including you, it's roughly flat.
Okay. Well, he told me he had the same exact figure on hold. So, I don't know.
I can only tell you what's before me that I'm reporting to the public.
No, I'm not telling you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Anyone else care to speak? If no one else cares to speak, I will close the public portion. May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourning, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Steve.
All right, thanks, everybody. Have a great night.
Take care, Steve.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna take just a minute or two, and then we'll get back into our regular schedule.
Mayor, I'd like to call to order the work session meeting of the Elwood Park Mayor and Council for May 6, 2021, to order at 7:16 PM. On roll call, council members Balaschary?
Here.
Ficori?
Here.
Fasolo?
Here.
Golebeck, absent, Pellegrine?
Here.
Council President Wetchler?
Here.
Mayor Coletti?
Thank you, Erin. I'd like to welcome everyone once again. I think we've increased our number by a few since we last had met about 15 minutes ago. To our Barrow of Elwood Park work meeting, May 6, 2021, at 7:00, 7:00 PM. Are we, I guess we fall a little behind here. I'm just buying time here. I'm trying to make this meeting go a little longer this evening. Whereas Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of the State of New Jersey require at the commencement of every meeting, a statement of compliance be read by the presiding law officer. Now, therefore be advised that the meeting requirements for this meeting have been met by publishing an annual notice in the Record and Herald News of Woodland Park, and by posting such notice in the office of the Barrow Clerk, as well as in a public place within the municipal building, and by notifying interested citizens. Notice was posted on January 8, 2021, and published on January 13, 2021. Going to open it to the public? Anyone care to speak? If not, are we... Okay, Dominic.
Hi, good evening.
Welcome, Dominic.
Hi, thank you.
In the mic, Dominic, please. Jeff, is that still on the mic? Or does he have to turn? The one that's on the...
Dominic, can you just tap the mic? Let's see if it's on, as it taps.
I've been a hold. I got it.
Green. Okay. Dominic Scalcione, S-C-A-L-C-I-O-N-E, 120 East 54th Street. And as I've spoken before about the vaccinations, and I'd like to speak on that issue again, I believe there are two outstanding issues. And the one is getting the local numbers for the towns. And I don't know, you probably saw this in the paper, the governor discussed this at his news conference on Monday, and he said the following. We're going to try to make vaccination numbers more localized and more widely available, collating and releasing hyper-local data, giving local officials and community leaders a clear look into what's happening in their neighborhoods, so they can work with us at the state level, their county partners, to focus on lagging areas. And then he said, I'll show you this, for example, he showed a slide for 16 municipalities with populations over 10,000, where currently fewer than 40% of eligible residents have received an initial dose. He put up the wrong slide. I happened to be going through this last night, and I don't know if you saw the numbers. I'm sure Erin probably saw it, because this mentioned Garfield, 15%, and then Fairview, 15, above 15%. I found the correct numbers. I don't know where you got that slide from. It must've been put up in error. But they were around, two, two communities in Bergen County were under 40%. That was Fairview and Garfield, they're around 36%.
Total vaccinated?
Yeah, first shot. So, that could be good news for us if we weren't on that list, you know? So, the big thing now is getting those numbers. And I checked with the commissioners last night, they haven't come out yet. The statement that the governor made, it seemed to indicate that he was gonna work with the individual communities, but I find that a little unlikely, there's almost 600 communities in the state. I would think that when these numbers become available, I assume they're trying to work at them between, coming at them from the CVC and local information that we have here in the state. So, I would think that they would send them to the county, and the county would send them to us. I would think, I don't know.
Mike, do we get that report?
We don't.
We don't. We just get the actual COVID cases.
This is gonna be something new.
I see.
Getting it yet. So, I think we'll, you know, we can't really make any decisions as to whether we need to do more. I sent, a few days ago, I sent out to yourself, Mayor, I think, and the council president, that notice that came from Call Step, that they're doing a, a COVID vaccination Saturday at Sun Chemical, which is being sponsored by Riley. So, you know, we don't, I don't think we really know yet what our situation is. You, you don't know, right?
No.
You don't know what percent of vaccination is or anything like that.
No. We just get the county reports on the COVID situation?
Right.
And those numbers?
So, we're expecting that to happen soon, you know, that we're gonna find out, you know, what the individual capital of communities are, and that the state will provide some kind of incentives or some other resources. That's what I'm thinking is going to happen. So, the other thing he announced...
So, before you leave that, what you're recommending is that we promote the fact that people should get vaccinated. You want us to spread that word? Is that basically...
Well, the, the, the governor's gonna do it, you know? I mean, we're just gonna segue into whatever they're doing.
Okay, okay.
So, you know, it's still up in the air. We don't know what we need to do, because we don't know what our situation is. We don't know what the numbers are, you know? So, since I was last here, I knew Councilman Fasolo had mentioned about CBS, and they become a very big player in the vaccines. I don't know if you're aware, but I post every few days the schedule, and that's about 12 different places, 12, not 12, three major places where people can get vaccinated. That would be several CBS locations within this area, Bergen New Bridge, which you see a lot, and I think you had that posted, you have that posted on the, on the borough website. And different vaccines, and whether or not now CBS has, if yesterday, are accepting walk-ins at all their sites. So, I post this every few days on our, that Facebook page that the borough uses, that people use for the borough, it's not affiliated with the borough. So, I, I post that information. The newest thing is that CBS is accepting walk-ins, and I post the different kinds of vaccines that are available. I don't know if you've seen it, Mayor.
Repeat that, I'm sorry, I was making a note.
I, I post the different places where people can get vaccinated.
Yes, I did see it.
The situation has changed dramatically in two months. We couldn't, it was very difficult to get a vaccine anywhere, and now you could, you could go on the CBS website and schedule an appointment for today, tomorrow, or sometime over the weekend. I did notice that since they announced that they're gonna take walk-ins, that there's far fewer schedules available by November this weekend. So, that just started, so that's, that's a new change. So, those are the two things that I wanted to mention, that we're looking for these numbers. The other thing is, I don't know if you saw these numbers that were posted on Monday. Initially, they said Fairview was 15%, and then they said Garfield was 15% as well. Those, those numbers were wrong. But I think hopefully that's good news for us, that our numbers are not that bad as far as being vaccinated. So, you know, I think we need to, I don't know if you're considering trying to set up a vaccination, a site for the town like Call Step did, and some others, I think. I'm, he's the only ones that I happen to hear about, the Milford and River Edge. I haven't heard about Fairmont yet. I know they had a high infection rate. So, I don't know whether, you know, you have looked into this yet, or I think, I think it was stated before by the chief that you have looked into this.
I would, I would think our Board of Health representatives would take the lead on that, and they would know, in coordination with the county, what, if we, what we can do.
Well, now that the county has started this, I just saw it today on the, on the county executive Facebook, and they're gonna have regional testing and vaccination. That's starting, that's starting next week. They're gonna have like a mobile unit coming around. So, again, that's another option.
Mayor, through you?
Yes, please, Lori.
Mike, I know Mr. Fidligno has been trying to get this to be a vaccination site. They were not letting any more sites out there at the time because there was not enough vaccines. I know our Board of Health has been trying, Marlene. One thing, Mrs. Fava was working with an individual from town, one of the ones that got the awards, Maria, that was in touch with a doctor that may, he, when vaccines from the Johnson &amp; Johnson could no longer be used for a short time, he was going to go to residents that were homebound and, and be able to give them a shot, which they're still working on. Now that the Johnson &amp; Johnson are back out there, this may still be a reality for a homebound resident. So, they are still really working on that, and that's an avenue for people that just can't get anywhere else. So, they, we didn't forget about it. We are still actively working on it. Mrs. Fava's on it with a couple of the nurses that are very involved from the Board of Health. So, we should have an update soon. Hopefully, that goes through, because then, now there's a lot more vaccine sites that people can go to that, that can get out. But for the ones that can't, we're, we're hoping that this doctor will get this shipment of vaccines that he's hoping to get, and, and that will be an avenue for those that are homebound to get vaccinated.
One thing I want to say is that everything has before, it's rapidly changing, okay? They're starting to talk about, at the news conferences now, they're starting to talk about shutting down some of the mega sites in Essex County, because they want to do all local stuff. They want to get into the community. So, that's, I wanted to mention that, and we have to be very quick on our feet. In two weeks, everything could be different. They could be begging us to come to our community. That's how much it could change in two weeks. The other thing I wanted to mention, that in addition to the, to the sites that I posted on the Facebook page, I also added what the governor had mentioned, that homebound people, homebound seniors and the disabled can register, and they'll arrange for, I think it's to go to the county of aging, the county also aging. But I also put that link on our Facebook page and a phone number to call, so that they can register.
I, I know our, our, our group is really, Mrs. Fava, along with the two nurses, are really working hard to get this accomplished.
And I will come to the meeting next week.
Yeah, come to the meeting on Monday, and I think there'll be a lot more information available. You're welcome.
Thank you, Dominic. Your concern, we should have a dozen more like you. Moving along, anyone else care to speak? No one else cares to speak from the public? I will close the public portion. Erin?
Thank you, Mayor. First, on the agenda this evening, we have discussion, the first item being our capital budget expenses.
Mayor, would you like me to?
Yes, please.
Okay, so this year, departments have submitted their requests. Public Works needs a garbage truck, a roll-off pickup truck, and a snow thrower machine, I think it's called a Snowblow. His request is $700,000 for those items.
How much, Mike?
700 for those items. That's the, the cost of those items. In the police department, we are acquiring three SUVs, new car cameras to sync with our body cam... Uh, in the police department, we are acquiring three S U Vs, uh, new car cameras to sync with our body cameras. Our car cameras are severely outdated. They are mandated now and we need to upkeep them. And we are looking for security, um, cameras for two more of our parks, as well as pedestrian signs for Mola Boulevard at five locations, which are the electronic type. We get a lot of complaints from residents that they have a hard time crossing. These are the L E D flashing solar, uh, ones. So we identified five locations and our total from the police department is two, what did I put there?
Two ninety.
Two ninety for that, those, all those items. Recreation is upfitting new basketball courts at Borough Field and Birchwood Park. And the cost of those is three eighty. So all in, Mr. Rigatano, and you, uh, wanted to add for the roads?
And for the roads. So it's up to the council. What I would like to do is do a bond ordinance for the next meeting. That bond ordinance would be approximately two million dollars. That will include everything for the year. And obviously if we get some grants, um, if we get some of this American Rescue money, that's where we may be able to reduce some of the debt, which I know everyone doesn't like to issue debt. That's how we would do this.
So what's the three eighty for in the rec department?
Uh, new basketball courts at Borough Field and Birchwood Park.
Three hundred and eighty thousand?
Yeah.
Mike, have they not been repaired or, you know?
Well, the, the, the mayor and council decided about a year ago to remove the court from Elmwood Drive Park and to put a new state-of-the-art basketball court back in at Borough Field where it was removed for a hockey rink which fell flat on its face. And now we want to resurrect that and put the courts back there. Um, that's a big job. And the basketball courts at Birchwood Park are dilapidated and, and not cared for. And we need to resurface them and put new rims and, and backboards and everything else up there. So, uh, an all-in price because there's paving and milling and, and fencing and stuff. It's, it's three hundred and eighty thousand.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. Okay, I, I agree with you. We certainly deserve it. But, uh, can we take some money from the trust fund to?
We are for the Gaul Ave courts. That, we didn't, we took that out of the equation.
That's why it's not in the capital budget. We're gonna pay that cash, what Mike suggested.
Gaul Avenue.
Gaul Avenue. It's gonna come out of the rec department. Okay, so with roughly, I, I, I'm having a hard time fathoming three hundred and eighty thousand dollars for two basketball courts that are in, in place already and we're gonna just refurbish them.
Mayor, that's the quotes that he got? I mean, you can look at them. I could send them to you. I mean, that's what, that's the quotes that were given.
Yeah, go ahead, Roy.
Also, all these numbers, they all have to be either state contract or we're gonna bid it. So what we're doing is putting the funds in place. If it comes in lower, great. If it comes in higher, there's nothing you could do about that either.
So this is an estimated cost?
It's estimated.
By, by who? An engineer or?
Yeah.
Mike?
Sean's working with the engineer, yes, on the, on both sets of courts.
Okay. But you could see my concerns.
But you, none of this money can be spent until you all agree to spend it. Even with the bond ordinance in place, you're gonna see the resolutions, whether it be the S U V, whether it be this garbage truck, which will be a state contract, hopefully. Um, yeah, all this is capital money. It's not just gonna be spent. It's gonna go through the public purchasing process. Uh, for the roads, it's gonna be a formal bid through the engineer. The recreation basketball courts will be through the engineer.
We're talking a million four at this point? That's without any roadwork?
No, a million eight seventy with the roads.
A million eight seventy?
Seventy. Almost two million, I said.
Right, so eight seventy, you're allocating four hundred and seventy thousand for roads?
Five hundred.
Five hundred?
Right.
Okay. Now, I don't have no problem with that, providing the first leg is the drainage problems we have.
We did that already, last year. We did that last year.
So that's, that's been capitalized, ready?
That bond is already in place.
In place. All right. So then it would just be, my next concern would be the roads that public service is not required to pave the second half of. We need to have a handle on that. Do we have a handle on that?
We're, we're working on it with our engineer.
Okay, so.
What we're trying to do is get the funds in place so that when Mike has the formal bids, the, uh, the specifications, he'll then obviously come to you and then we'll go out and bid.
No, I understand that. And what I'm trying to do is the million eight, not spend it all unless we absolutely have to. What happens is when you know you've got an open check somewhere, sometimes we tend to spend more than we should. That's my whole philosophy.
Not with capital.
But we can't spend it on anything else, Mayor. It's appropriated for this and this only. If it's under, then, then it doesn't get spent.
Right, we cancel it. We do.
I get that, Mike. I get it. All right, I'm with you. It's just, we need to analyze where to go with the, with the dollars. Because of that public service item, and I think that will be a telltale story there.
Well, we can't nail them down. They're, they're, they're giving us the runaround, when they're coming back to do their work. And we can't wait on them. We have other roads that are desperately in need of repair and we have to focus on those roads. We can't sit and wait for public service.
We're not gonna have no recollection, Mike? On, on, on the, on the number that we're gonna be required to do while they're doing the?
Well, they, they, they haven't come back to town yet and they keep putting it off. So I don't, I, I don't have an answer right now. I keep, we keep calling them. We keep trying to set up meetings and they're not ready to come back and complete the work.
Okay, can we agree to this then? That, that four hundred and eighty thousand dollars, uh, until we absolutely know that this year, th- they're not gonna have an answer for us and then we spend the money elsewhere, but we wait for that moment as long as we could.
Yeah, we can. I mean, if, if, if things get too far off, then we run into the cold weather.
Yeah, we're gonna have to make a choice. I get you.
We're gonna miss paving.
Yeah, yeah.
You wanna get the bids out, as you know, Mayor, it's two months just to get the bid specs done.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I'm just saying. Yeah, okay. Yeah.
Please just get a breakdown of what you said each item from each department needs.
Yes.
Can you send an email?
Sure.
Thank you.
So, so we're not agreeing on this tonight or we are? Are we, are we, we, 'cause this stuff, this has to be read twice?
Right. So what I would like to do through Mike, as your CFO, nothing gets spent unless it comes to you. Nothing. What I would like to do, because of the process, and it is arduous, you have to get the bond prepared. It's gotta go through the supplemental debt process. It then has to go to Steve Rogert and he's not gonna approve anything unless we have the details. And only then can we start the process of even bidding some of this stuff out.
Roy, may I interrupt? Can you, just a suggestion, you know, Ms. Councilwoman Pellegrine requested the breakdown. So if that could be sent, I could put this on the agenda again for next week. Um, but in the meantime, you know, we could proceed with getting the bond ordinance ready for the twentieth.
And, and again, like I said, and the only reason is, and I gotta agree with Mike, uh, the road program, we don't even know yet, C D B G, what's coming out yet because of the pandemic. And again, as far as the, everything that Mike said, I mean, we went through these items. The police, you don't have it, you can't say anything. It's an attorney general's opinion. You have to upgrade some of this stuff. The garbage truck, I'm sure you all saw it. It's fallen apart. I saw it two weeks ago. I said, is this really, really working? I mean, we, again, I'm just supporting, um, what needs to be done.
Roy, we normally on an average bond a million and a half per year. Is that correct?
This is definitely a little bit higher, Mayor.
And we're looking at a million nine, so there should be some skepticism.
Okay.
Well, the garbage truck is over twenty years old. That's probably the biggest ticket item here that we, we, we buy every twenty years.
It's like a half a million dollars.
What's that for the garbage truck?
Yeah, the garbage truck.
Yeah.
Okay.
You gotta see it, Mayor. It's all apart.
Can't we, can't we get another five years out of it? All right, but just let's keep in mind, we're, we normally a million and a half. We're over it. So when it comes to that paving program, let's just be cognizant and aware that we don't have to spend the whole thing unless we absolutely have to.
Mayor, there's one other thing.
Yeah.
So the American Rescue Act, what Steve was talking about, we'll get more guidance next week. This is exactly where, uh, President Biden, uh, Governor Murphy are in agreement to, that, this is where this money is supposed to go. Infrastructure. Not reduce taxes, which we didn't do. So I think we're gonna be able to reduce the debt and not have to issue all this debt out, which would be in line with what you're looking for.
Oh, well, I was a little confused because I thought he was talking about windmills as infrastructure.
Water.
A little levity there. Moving along, Erin?
I'm good.
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you, Roy.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
You too. Okay, next on the agenda, Mayor, under discussion, requests from Councilman Pasolo regarding the Youth Advisory Committee and Pride Month. So with that being said, Councilman Pasolo?
Thank you, Erin. Um, I just wanted to, I asked Erin to put this on the agenda to, uh, to let everybody know that the first Youth Advisory Committee meeting, um, I'm gonna hold and I'm gonna put the invitation on Facebook sometime tonight for May seventeenth at six P M. I'm also gonna have a Zoom option, so people who don't want to come out, um, could do it on Zoom. Uh, we're gonna be discussing diversity and acceptance in our community and that kinda ties into the flag raising, uh, the LGBTQ flag raising, which, uh, the Youth Committee will be doing on June first. I'm, if we're all in agreement with that for June first. Uh, so by the Youth Committee and then the Elmwood Park Diversity Committee as well, which I'll be talking about later tonight in my, uh, my committee report. And, uh, yeah, the invite will be posted tonight. If anybody has anything else that they want to add, you could just let me know.
Thank you. Yes.
Who's on the Youth Advisory Committee? We have, we have picked a committee.
It was you and Councilwoman Ingui at the time, so.
So we need somebody else?
If anybody who wants to. Shakib? Yeah, so Councilman Focori would be on that too as well.
Shakib, didn't anyone ever tell you never volunteer for anything?
He loves the, he loves the community, Mayor.
Okay, Mayor. Uh, moving on to resolutions. Two A, we have a vacation buyback request. Any questions?
No, we've been over that a couple of times.
Yep. Two B is the quote for a library paving from Zaccaro.
Go ahead, Mike.
So this is for, um, the section of Lee Street off of Mola Boulevard that leads into the library driveway. Um, we have a beautiful new library. We have a beautiful new asphalt in there and the road needs to be matched at. So that's what this is for, Mayor.
Yeah. I, I'd like to commend you on, uh, you expediting this item. I received a call from Kathy and she said it'd be nice if one of the library opened up, if the road can be paved. The neighbors certainly deserve it.
I have a video on Mike Roy. He was doing this a couple of weeks ago.
I, I know. Well, okay. Well, the good part of this is that it seems like this will come quick and maybe be before we open. But the road is in desperate need of it. And I think, uh, Mr. Feligno got an excellent price considering, considering the square footage. And it's basically a small job for a paving company. So I, my recommendation is, is to go forth with it. Not the curbing. We don't need the curbing in the sidewalk. We, Mike and I took a look at some pictures and decided that, they don't qualify. They're in good shape. Uh, they don't qualify for the thirty percent replacement factor.
Do we have a total for two B? Is this, is number one the total? Okay, that's for, that's everything or, all right.
So we're eliminating the, the sidewalk and curb aspect and we're just looking for the pavement, which would be two, two B, which would be a total of, uh, the total, where's the total on here? Lumpsum price?
Thirteen two under item one. And then would you be proceeding with option one and or two?
Yeah, I was looking at the bottom for this.
Well, I mean, I think our D P W could do the, uh, the painting of the center line and the, uh, side line.
Okay, so just one.
So I would just say, let's just do a, go with one.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right.
All right, so two C is also a quote from Zaccaro for work at Falmouth Avenue, adding an additional driveway apron.
Mike, you wanna?
Yes, Mayor. That's the ambulance corps building. We, uh, have a lot more traffic and stuff going on there, especially with the pantry, um, and the wrap program. And, and it's in need of another exit slash entrance. So we're gonna make it like a, uh, an entrance and an exit way. It'll streamline vehicular traffic in that area and I think it's definitely needed.
I guess we can call it a drive-through pantry?
Yes, exactly.
It's good. Innovating.
We're gonna remove the fence, put a new fence up, and put another driveway apron for people to exit through.
Okay, two D are sample resolutions regarding immigration, also requested, uh, by Councilman Pasolo. So I don't know if he wants to speak on these.
Sure, just staying on the issue of diversity and acceptance. I think that's my theme here tonight. Um, there's two resolutions here. I know we all got an email from, well, I got an email and I forwarded it to everyone from Councilman Herrera and Garfield, uh, where he recognizes that his city and, and also our community have a massive immigration population. Uh, and this calls for immigration reform to Congressman Pascal and Senators Booker and Menendez.
Mr. Pasolo, I gotta be honest with you. I think that this isn't, these kind of decisions don't belong in our chambers here. Uh, this is more of a state issue, even a national issue. And, uh, I, I personally feel that we should stay out of it. If not, then before you make a decision for twenty-three thousand people, you should do a referendum as far as an opinion on these subjects. So I would think just staying out of this would be a smart way of approaching.
I respect your opinion, Mayor. Um, this is just a, a push to call upon them to do something about immigration. That's it. This isn't a law. This isn't a, um, a decision that we're making for them. It's just a push for them to pass some sort of immigration reform.
So what are you looking for here? What are we looking for?
A show of support, Mayor.
I'm sorry?
A show of support for the millions of, uh, immigrants here in New Jersey and, um, in our community.
Well, without getting to the specifics, I say, I say once.
Yeah, we don't have to debate immigration here, Mayor.
Uh, I, I, I think we should stay out of this and that's my opinion. Before we make a decision of supporting something, uh, I think you should take it to the, to the people, to the, uh, to the residents of the town, because we're only a handful here compared to the opinions of twenty-three thousand residents.
Okay.
Moving along.
Item two E, the B C U A Solid Waste Cooperative Marketing Program was sent over by the Bergen County Utilities Authority. I sent it over to our D P W Superintendent Scott Cars to weigh in to see if it would be something beneficial uh, for us to enter. He did not have a, a chance to get our numbers and weigh in if it would be beneficial for us. So with your blessing, I will hold this for our next meeting.
So, so basically, we were chatting about this earlier. Uh, this is, uh, for the B C U A. They will take prices in volume based on whatever volume we have.
It would be like co-op.
Co-op collectively and hopefully it'll be a cheaper rate for us.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so I'll add that again to next week. Uh, two F is the resolution for the Bergen County Open Space Grant for our Borough Park improvements. For this grant, a public hearing is required and will be held at the May twentieth public meeting.
Mike, you have anything on that?
Uh, this is just securing the grant funding to make improvements to, uh, Borough Field. Uh, we, and the resolution is required in order for us to apply.
Mike, now, Mike, just out of curiosity, uh, this grant, this is a matching grant, correct?
Yes, Mayor.
And what did we have planned for, let's say we do get a certain amount, was that the baseball field that we were gonna look at?
Uh, we're gonna take it as far as we can. Definitely the baseball field has been a topic of conversation to turf it. Um, there's been a lot of problems there, uh, with the, with the terrain. Um, and it, it needs constant upkeep and we're sinking a lot of money into it. So we had a meeting with Public Works and the engineers and the Little League. And our, our goal there is to turf that field. It gets a lot of play. Um, and then if we can expand that onto other areas of Borough Field for soccer and other, other things with, depending how far the money will go, that, that would be the goal, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. That sounds good.
That's all I have on the agenda this evening, Mayor.
Council reports? It's that time once again? Ding dong, council reports. Councilwoman Dallas. Dallas Derry, are you ready?
Okay, recreation. I'm so happy to see the softball and baseball games have begun. The athletes and their families have been anxious to get back on to some normalcy, so I'm glad that we're moving forward. Saturday, I attended the open, opening of the People's Pantry. This is a wonderful addition to our community. Kudos to all that helped to bring this to life. We have seen more compassionate individuals helping and volunteering from the different amazing groups in town. The Sunday First Presbyterian Church in Elmwood Park distributed bags of food to our residents as well. Also, strangers helping strangers have been giving boxes of food and meals to our residents twice a week for a year now. You know, I'm proud to be, and my granddaughter be blessed to be part of this group of volunteers, not only from Elmwood Park, but also from Garfield as well that comes to Elmwood Park. This is the result of communities helping communities. I'm confident that this compassion for one another will continue to grow if anyone has an hour or two each week to volunteer for any of these groups. I can assure you that it is a gratifying feeling. Chief, also I want to thank you because you're always working very hard to help to bring our ideas to reality. And with that, progress, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Fakori.
I think you'd just like to say my name, Mayor.
I love Shakib.
I appreciate that, Mayor. Thank you. Last Saturday, I attended the opening of the Resident Pantry. It was a wonderful event. So many residents attended. I want to thank the chief, all the people that are involved, but mostly Councilwoman Pellegrin and Ms. Fava. You did a great job. I commend you for your generosity, your kindness to the people, and I saw it firsthand. Thank you. Also, yesterday, I attended for the first time with Chief Feligno and Councilman Fasolo, a meeting with some members of the community about a wonderful program that I think is going to be a great success in this town. And a lot of great things are coming out of Elmwood Park, so stay tuned. And, Mike, thank you again. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Shakib. Mike, would you like to elaborate a little more on the program that Shakib was talking about? I think it's a great idea.
I will. I'm going to let Councilman Fasolo report it first, and then I can piggyback off of him. But before I turn it over, I know Mrs. Grislex here, if you, if you don't mind me, Mayor, talking about Patterson East Side Park real quick.
Yes, go.
So we are going to re-enter a agreement with Patterson to help have an officer in the park there. The borough's going to contribute towards that. We feel it's necessary, once again, because it has grown again. So we're going to contribute for a short period of time and see if we can get it under control again. So I promised you that I would work on that, and, and that's, that's coming soon, okay? So I just wanted to reassure you of that. You're very welcome. You're welcome.
Okay, moving along. Councilman Fasolo.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to commend everybody involved in the People's Pantry. I was there for the grand opening last weekend, and it was great to see so many residents there in support, and so many residents willing to donate as well. You know, it's just, you know, I always tell this story, but sitting at the table with, with Councilwoman Pellegrin, and I asked her, what, you know, what do you want to, what is your goal? And her goal was to just help people. And you could see by this RAP program, every month it's something new, every, every year is just making huge strides for our community. So I just want to commend her and everybody involved in making that possible. Just to elaborate on what Councilman Fakori said and, and the chief here, yeah, we did meet two times already. I met with the chief to discuss the EP Diversity Community, which is planning so many fun and great things to bring our community together with diversity and acceptance and making, you know, police, you know, community policing the center of it as well. So we're, we're definitely going to be announcing some, some great things really soon. So progress, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Golembeck. Ooh, excuse me.
I didn't know he wasn't coming, Mayor. Sorry.
That's okay. I didn't know he wasn't here. Sorry, Mr. Golembeck. Councilwoman Pellegrin.
Yes, my Board of Health update. The next rabies clinic will be held on Wednesday, May 12th, at Firehouse Number 4, Mola Boulevard, from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Please wait in your car. Registration and paperwork will be handed out to everyone. COVID-19 guidelines will be followed. Any questions, please call Marlene Di Stefano at 201-796-1457, extension 201. And the next Board of Health meeting is Monday, May 10th, at 7:00 PM. The Residents Assistance Program update. On Saturday, May 1st, we celebrated the grand opening of the People's Pantry. So many came out to support this new addition to the RAP program. This pantry will be a blessing in our community. It will help so many of our residents in need. A big thank you to Angela Fava, Dionne York, Scott Cars, Giovanni Penna, our Board of Health members, Chief Feligno, and the entire Elmwood Park PD, the Mayor and Council, our families and our friends, our Residents Assistance Committee members, our local businesses, and our residents. It's because of everyone's generosity and hard work that the pantry will be able to help so many. For any questions or more information on this program, please call Angela Fava or Dionne York at 201-796-1457, extensions 106 or 211. The VFW is having a celebration on Saturday, May 22nd. Come join us at the VFW, 6 Veterans Place, Elmwood Park, time 12:00 PM to 4:00 PM. Pizza, hot dogs, popcorn, cotton candy, soda, and beer will be offered for purchase. Adults $10 per person, children $5 per person. Includes one food item and one drink. Also, there will be bouncy houses for the children to play. Come and support the VFW. It would be a fun afternoon for all. The rain date will be Sunday, May 23rd, 12:00 PM to 4:00 PM. So thank you. And just one last thing on the People's Pantry. I stated all the facts, but you had to be there. It was just a beautiful day of community coming together, and out of that day, of those few hours, I can't tell you how many calls Mrs. Fava received that people want to help. How can we help? How can we help? I received calls at my own home, Lorraine, how could we help? How could we help? So the mayor was on hand, council members were there. So it was just a beautiful day, and everybody really wants to make that pantry a success. So again, to anybody watching, I thank you from the bottom of our hearts. I think this is a program that will help so, so many. And like I said, if you have any questions, please reach out to Mrs. Fava or Dionne York, and they will guide you on how you can help. Thank you again, everyone.
Thank you, Lorraine. Lorraine, just a question. Most of the cost factor to the pantry is from donations. Can you explain that a little to everyone?
Sure. We get donations from our friends, our families, and our local businesses, and that's how the RAP program works. I mean, it doesn't come out of any funds from the council taxpayers. It's all donations. And this program started in 2018, and it started off very slowly. So now we're building up, building up, and the businesses are actually seeing like what, the good that's coming out of this. So every year, I thought this year with COVID and so many people having, you know, the businesses weren't doing so well, I was really afraid of what was going to happen this year. But instead, it worked out different. People actually gave more because they knew our residents were in desperate need of food. And I know it's hard to believe in Elmwood Park, and a lot of people don't want to hear that residents really don't have food, but that's, that's the God's honest truth. And just this pantry helping and our friends and families and these businesses, and, and like I said, Mr. and Sarah from Shoprate, who will be entering our community next year, he's been a big supporter. He gave us many gift cards to help our families get through this tough time, and he also said anytime the pantry's empty, just give him a call, and he will stock our pantry for us. So the generosity of so many has, has come through, and we really can't thank them enough.
I was going to save this for my report, but I just want to piggyback when it's fresh in the minds of all that are hearing. I think when it comes to our workforce here, besides their normal duties, they, there is a, have a uniqueness about caring, and their moral compass is for, for people. And when you incorporate the job with that type of a moral compass, you end up with situations like we had there Saturday, which has evolved, like you said, from 2002. But, you know, it seems like we sit up here and we throw bouquets at each other. Great this, great that. But that young lady over there, when she starts something, she does, excuse the expression, she's like a pit bull. She doesn't come, come off until she gets to her goal. And thank God that you were there to, to do such a great thing. Let me put it that way. Moving along. I think she's absent. I think she's absent. Council President? Council President Wetschler?
Thank you. Okay, Lorraine also did express about the RAP program, that we get donations for Thanksgiving, for the turkey dinners for every family, and for Christmas, that we go out and buy gifts that are donated by companies, that we go out and buy gifts for parents that can't afford gifts for their children for Christmas. We have, we set up a store downstairs, and the parents would come in and get toys for their children, wrapping paper and everything else that the parents would need. So this way, their children would have gifts for Christmas that they could never afford. And it's, you know, it's, we've been doing it for three years. I've been helping Lorraine for three years and everything else. It's so sandy. But in Angela Fava and Loris Pavero, we've all done it with our hearts, you know, helping everybody in this town. And what I always called when I said I'm sitting up here, is we're family. Everybody knows somebody in town that needs something, and that if we can't do it, you know, somebody else will help out to do it, and then we'll do it the next time. But we are a family, and this is a family up here, too, that works for every resident in this town and makes sure that they have food on the table, have gifts for Christmas for us, you know, for the children. And our residents that, like Lorraine said, with shots for, you know, for the COVID and everything else, every, we're all working to get everything done for everybody. So this way, everybody will be safe in this town. Second, the library.
Library, I knew you were going to that.
The library. We're just waiting for a couple more inspections. They put the furniture in, they've got the shelves up, they're going to start stocking the shelves with the books. We're hoping and within, hopefully by the end of the month, beginning of June, we should have everything in place, Michael, right, with the inspections, so that we could open up the library with grand, a grand slam. On the library there, we'll, you will see Mayor Richard A. Muller's Elmwood Park Public Library. It was donated, it was dedicated to him after he passed away.
Here, here.
Yes. He worked hard for this library. His heart was in it, his family's heart was in it and everything else. And once he passed away, I made the resolution, as I said, as a trust day, to make sure that his name would go on that library. So this would be another memorial for him, because he did give this town family, everything was with family. That's it. Progress.
You're so true. There'll never be another mayor like that, that's for sure. Spent 45 years of his life, dedicated, and he was dedicated to this town. So we're going to do him due honor, and the library's going to be named after him, which I think is apropos and fitting. My report, well, the council's got most of it done for me already. I was going to talk about Lee Street, that's done. Noise from over the river, I just want to say, I spoke to the chief on Monday morning, how was your weekend? And he'll usually say fine, you know, but he said, eh, he says, I was dealing with the noise from both day and night from the river. So this man don't rest. When there's a problem, nobody could ever accuse him of not following through. I can attest to that, and I would attest to it. And I put my hands on the Bible on that, Sal.
No problem, Mayor. I'm doing the right thing.
Okay. And I spoke about the pantry. I don't think I need to say anymore about that. And the VFW, we, we want to make sure that we're there on the 22nd to help, help them out in this fundraiser, right? And I'm hoping that Terry Sheridan, when we open it up to the public, should tell us about the other two fundraisers, one, two, two fundraisers in addition to that, right, going on. Okay, before I do that, I need a motion to open to the public. Second. All in favor? Would anybody from the public care to speak on anything that you heard tonight, or anything in the whole world? They all got up when I said that. I take it back. Yes, Mr. Freitag?
Jeffrey Freitag, 35, Hillman Drive. Today, the announcement was in, and this is regarding the Bergen County Trust Fund Grant Application. Is it also going to be virtual?
It's not. I actually reached out to our grant writer today about that, and because the location was on there, the advertisement is good as is, but it will not be virtual.
Okay, because it, let's say it on. Now, this doesn't mention anything about baseball field, just says soccer fields, repair uneven pavement, install a fence around the perimeter of the park.
I personally didn't have any conversations with the grant writer. He sent me the ad. I don't know who coordinated that with.
Because this seems to pretty, pretty much describe what they're putting money in for. Synthetic turf for the creation of soccer fields, repair uneven pavement, and install a fence around the perimeter of the park.
So what's, what's the question, Jeff? So.
Well, I heard they kept talking about the baseball field. I would assume you talked about Pine Street?
No, we're talking about Veterans Field, Veterans Park, we call it now. It's right by Company 4.
Oh, one by Company 4, which is the Little League Field. Okay, probably one that's in the best shape of all. In fact, you're doing a lot of work on it this week. And fence around the whole place?
No, I just, just the baseball field.
The grant, the, the language doesn't have to be that specific, according?
The language doesn't have to be that specific, according to the grant writer. This is just to secure the funding.
Forget the grant writer, what about the public?
It was just explained to you, right?
Yeah, I understand. What I'm saying is, you're saying it doesn't need to be that specific.
I'll have them, I'll have them amend it.
That's what I thought it was for. Okay, the other thing I have a question about. Through the Mayor, through Councilman Fasolo, Youth Advisory Committee, what's the age of the Youth Advisory Committee?
So I didn't put an age on it, but I did, the goal is for residents 18 and under. But I did, I am opening up to the entire public, just so we get a sense. Yeah, I'm opening, I'm doing a Zoom option as well, just because I'm not sure of the interest in it. But it's going to be advertised in a way where it's going to attract under 18.
Because you're going to be dealing with some very sensitive subjects.
Correct.
On June 4th, you know, when this was brought up, there were some issues that, in fact, I reported a question later on, some of the things that were being said had some legal issues. Are those the type of things that you're planning on discussing?
No, it's just how to get the community more involved through diversity, you know, festivals and things like that.
So this is going to be, you're targeting 18 and under?
Yeah, the youth.
So would require parental permission for them to be on this committee, or?
I wouldn't think so, no. I could check with the borough attorney, but I'm not sure. I don't think so.
Okay. And my other thing is regarding the Mayor's statements regarding the resolution that's going to be considered regarding immigration. These things can be very broad-reaching, and I think it's got to be very well-defined as to what the representative may be going after, because this is a very large issue. You could be talking about illegal immigrants, immigration numbers, depending on how to define it. So it's got to be pretty well-defined, not just generalities. Okay.
Thank you, Jeff. Anyone else care to speak? Dominic, second round.
To the chief, just a quick question. Which new parks, which parks are getting new cameras? Or could you just tell us if English Avenue Park is getting cameras? Thank you.
Yes, it's, it's getting a camera. Thank you. Anyone else? Mrs. Sheridan? Mrs. Sheridan?
Terry Sheridan, Eastwood Ford Street, Elmwood Park.
Terry, could you just pull the mic to you, please? Down, and bring it down, so, there you go.
Is that better?
Better, thank you.
Getting back to the VFW, we're having the celebration on the 22nd. Then June 5th is the fishing derby from 92 in the marina. Then June 19th is the Elton Johnish, which goes from 7:00 to 9:30, doors open at 6:30.
Elaborate on that a little bit, because this is a good show. This is going to be good.
What it is, it's the young men prevail on that in the teens, Elton John. Okay, he'll sing his songs, I don't know, he's got to dress like them, but it's pretty good. And I can only hold 125 people, so first come, first served. You know, due to COVID, I can only have 125 people in the VFW.
Cost and what goes along with the cost, what's per ticket?
$20 per ticket, and doors open at 6:30. He'll come on at 7:00, from 7:00 to 8:00, and then 8:00, 8:30 is intermission, 8:30 to 9:30.
And the bar will be?
Cash bar, raggles.
And bring your own?
Your own papers, there's not going to be any food served because of COVID, so you can bring potatoes, peppers, whatever you want. But there will be a bar for beverages, you know, soda.
Social lubrication, I call it.
Exactly, yeah. It should be a fun night, it's going to be a good night.
Hi. Thank you very much, Terry. I urge everyone to help her out. She's up against the wall there with the VFW. They're having some tough times, and we want to see that precious, precious organization stay intact. So Terry, we're going to do all we could for you and Joe Mulligan and the whole VFW as much, as much as we possibly can, as you can see, we are doing. Okay. Anyone else here to speak? Going once, twice? Sold. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Mayor Executive.
May I have a motion to go into executive? I thought we were going to get away with it this time, unfortunately. See, she caught me. Motion to go into executive. All in favor?
Where is the Open Public Meetings Act PL 1975, Chapter 231, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances? And whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the governing body wishes to discuss litigation legal reports, minutes will be kept, and once the matter involving the confidentiality of the above no longer requires the confidentiality, then the minutes can be made public. Now therefore be resolved that the public be excluded from this meeting.
Mike, can you hit pause? Please.